Alrighty, so I'd like to open this not, well, it is a school committee meeting, but not an official school committee meeting. We're calling this a workshop. This is an opportunity for school committee members to talk about the various scenarios of the cuts that we've been asked to make. And, but before we get into that, I just want to
I know.
Anyways, I'm sorry. It's important to to mention or to acknowledge George Floyd and the pain and suffering of the black and brown communities and also our society in general. And as a school committee member, as a member of this community, I think it's important to have a more thoughtful conversation. So I'm hoping that tomorrow we can talk about this in a more thoughtful manner and how the school and how the school can work with the community to to take responsibility, to educate and to build awareness. And so I'm hoping for that conversation and not just one conversation, but many more to come. So with that, first of all, I apologize. And, but I just want to announce to the attendees, thank you very much for for coming this evening. This is a workshop, so we are not going to take questions or comments at this time. However, we invite you to come tomorrow night to our regularly scheduled school committee meeting at 5:00. And we will have public input, we'll have questions, we'll allow questions during the FY21 budget agenda items. So take your notes, have your questions and please come tomorrow. And if you can't, email me at scchair@email.medfield.net. Alrighty, so right now I'm going to pass this on to Jeff and Michael to go through the various scenarios.
Thanks, Anna May. Michael's going to share his screen. We have just a couple of slides and we're going to go through some of the spreadsheets and some recommendations that we have going forward. So I don't know if you could do that, Michael? Thank you. So just wanted to give some background. We figured that we might have some folks here that haven't been to any of the public hearings or the meetings or whatever. So we wanted to just give kind of a background to, you know, how we got here and, you know, what our, what our process has been. Instead of going through that entire process that we do through a public hearing and that entire presentation, one just gave you kind of a high level of where we've been and what we've done. So typically, we start doing our budget in October, November. We start generating that with our department heads and our principals, our assistant principals and directors. And we gather all that information and then we build our budget through, you know, 30-plus meetings individually with the department heads and principals and try to get a sense of what they're asking for and why. And then Michael and I put together a budget and we do an initial presentation in December to the school committee, which we did this year on December 5th. At that point, it's still the superintendent's budget. We go through, we build that budget, but on the public hearing night, that's the opportunity that I have as superintendent to present what I think is the best budget for our community and for our school district. At that point, the school committee can either accept that number or ask me to go back and rearrange some things. At the January 30th meeting, they voted our budget, which was a 4.02% increase over FY20, our current year. So that was where we were then. We had multiple school committee meetings after that in which we discussed the budget and looked at guidance. You know, part of the issue this year was it was just a weird year. So we were in full steam ahead mode in terms of our budget development and everything was on schedule. The governor released his first budget and then typically the Senate and the House released theirs and then it ends up somewhere in the middle. But then COVID-19 hit it hard and everything went to a standstill. So the town side had to go to a standstill because they didn't know what numbers were going to be used from the state. We had to do this exact same thing. So we had really not a lot of conversation and budget development that happened for about a six-week period because we were all waiting to see what was going to happen. Since that time, we've gotten, we've got guidance from the state on that. They typically have their budget done in beginning of June, end of June. Sometimes it stretches in the beginning of July. They're telling us right now it's going to be mid-July, the earliest and possibly in August. So that presents problems for us because we typically get about $6 million in Chapter 70 money on top of what we get for local taxes. So it's kind of hard to be building a budget and then cutting a budget when you don't really know exactly where the money is going to, whether the money is going to come in or not. Because there is still that possibility like in '08 and '09 when the federal government actually stepped up at that point and backfilled districts so that we got Chapter 70 money and the towns got their local aid. So that's what we're kind of hoping for. So all this is being done really with the assumption that we're not getting any additional money from the state other than a 10% reduction and we're getting no stimulus money. So that, those are the assumptions that we make during this process. Very difficult to not only build a budget, but then decide what you're going to cut when you don't know what the money is actually going to be. You may not know until, you won't know until after town meeting, but just prior to when the school year starts. So I think that's in kind of important backdrop of there's still some unknowns that we just don't know about. We had a couple of warrant committee meetings as well. And I know that the real reason we're having this meeting tonight is to kind of do that workshop piece based on the warrant committee's vote on Monday night that reduced our overall budget, both operating and capital by over $1.2 million. So Michael and I have been working with the leadership team and really trying to figure out, you know, how we can go about this process of reducing our budget a million dollars. And when you come in at 4%, any school district that comes in at 4%, that's pretty average. I mean, I think we figured out it was going to be about 3.5% to open the doors in September. So 4% was essentially a level service budget, but gave us a little extra in terms of programming and that we wanted to have or positions. So as we go through this process now, we really looked at three things that we wanted to really maximize during this. So we wanted to look at how, when we make these reductions, how can we do it in a way that minimizes the impact for students and their opportunities? What can we do that really doesn't hurt the educational process for kids? That was our number one goal in this whole process is to do that. The second goal was how can we minimize the impact to existing staff? So what can we do for our employees that we that we have currently without going into reduction in force process? There's an easier way to do this, folks. You can just sit there and look at the list of teachers that are non-professional teacher staffs and you can pink slip all those teachers and then kind of let the chips fall where they may. And that's, you know, you're hearing, you're hearing stuff on the news of other communities doing that. We want to take a more thoughtful approach to it because that's, it doesn't do any good to hand out 43 pink slips and then just after figure out how you're going to divvy up people and where they're going to go. It's just not fair to our employees and it's just not a fair way to do things. So we chose to be thoughtful about it. And the third thing we wanted to consider, because we know that we're all on this same team right now, is to minimize the unemployment claims for the town. So we are the biggest, largest employer in the town of Medfield. When we lay off people and do reduction in force and eliminate jobs, unemployment claims go through the town and cost the town money. So we wanted to try to do this in a way that would not impact that or minimize that impact. It's going to impact at some, at some level. So just in terms of the overall request we had was $37,936,699. The total cut to our original operating budget is just over a million. So the new request was $36,877. And then we reduced another 200,000 in our capital request. So the total reduction voted for the warrant committee on Monday evening was 1.2 million. So that's what we've been working on and trying to get that number down to something that frankly doesn't decimate the district. Because there's, when you look at, at those numbers, you have an enormous impact on education and what our kids do each day. So we want to try to minimize that and again, try to do it in a real thoughtful manner. So Michael, I think you're going to go to a different screen now.
And Jeff, quickly, in order for us to open, just literally open the doors, nothing new, staff at exactly where it is in September or, you know, late August, what is that percentage number?
It's like 3.5.
3.5, right?
So we figured out that, you know, typically a level service, when you're looking at a school district is anywhere from a 3% to 6% increase. So level service means same people, same programs. So, you know, we felt like, you know, that coming in at the 4 point, excuse me, the 4.02 was essentially level service, but we had a couple of added programs that we wanted to win there. So.
And at that point, that was the guidance that we were also getting from the town that we felt as though, or that the town felt that, you know, a 4% around there and we wouldn't negotiate some. But that seems like that was a manageable amount.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a couple of things, right? So you have, you know, one of the things that happened is that even, you know, prior to COVID-19 and before that, all the revenue issues that came statewide, we were asked initially to cut that million dollars. And then we ended up doing 977 at that point. And that went down to, you know, 915, you know, give or take.
Because we were, we were having, as a town, I mean, I think that nobody on the warrant committee or the administration or here at this point will be surprised to understand, or taxpayers, quite frankly, that there is kind of a structural problem in that what we have done as a town to make our town livable and the place we want to be is also very expensive. And so our revenue is based almost entirely on taxpayers. And that the world, you know, state funding and federal funding has decreased so much over the last 15 to 20 years that what was once kind of an easy assumption around revenue doesn't necessarily always happen.
Yeah, so I think.
So I think that there's like a middle period we want to talk about here because Megan and I have spent a lot of time just trying to think about, as have you and Michael, kind of think about like where, where we, where the pre-COVID budget, which is kind of what we've been going for, for a balanced budget, so that we don't have to ask more from our taxpayers for this year, where that number is, right? And, and then talk about what we've had to reduce because of the increased concern about revenue going down because of COVID.
Right.
Kind of like a three-stage issue here.
Yeah. So I mean, you have the pre-COVID budget, which, you know, we were asked for the million dollars at the start and we ended up, ended up doing about the 915 or so. And then when, you know, the town has to generate, you know, has to operate on the, on the revenue projections. And I think they made a smart choice with the warrant committee as well to look at that at 10%. So a 10% reduction at this point. And there are other towns that are doing, you know, 20 and 30%. And, and that may happen, we don't know. But I think it was a good move to do the 10%. Frankly, there could be some additional, either stimulus money or if it's, if the state gives them their rainy day coffers to at least level fund local aid, which would level fund our Chapter 70 and level fund the local aid. And what would that mean to us? That would mean probably an additional 630,000 that would, that's earmarked for schools that we're not putting in this budget right now because we're projecting that to be cut. So we did, again, that's to my point in the beginning that we just don't know. So there could be an infusion of money if we, if we have that additional 630,000, that can negate some of the options that I'm going to share with you today. Michael, do you have that up on the screen? No, it's. I don't see it up on the screen. Can you go up? Michael, can you let us know what's up?
I do think.
So you guys can't see the screen right now? No, we can't see anything.
Yeah, it's just blank.
It's just plain white.
That as a committee, if we want to think about what kind of advocacy we can do for ourselves and for our town in terms of writing our legislators and asking for this kind of relief and perhaps thinking about that as a joint letter with the warrant, with the selectmen or on our own or what. But I do think that it's important for us to advocate for ourselves for that revenue relief. I mean, I, there are so many things to advocate for right now, but obviously revenue relief, money almost always equals how we get equity for everybody. And I think it's an important thing to do right now, that we should really be thinking about how we approach our legislators, the governor, our federal government to say, you know, this kind of relief right now would quite possibly be the difference between losing more staff, increasing unemployment, and really what next year will look like too. Because I don't know when this is going to specifically end. Just today, you know, on CNBC, there was somebody who was saying that they really think that the recession part of this is over and that everything has. But that's a stock market kind of fun.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
Number, and that's not a municipal number. Municipal funding lags.
There were, you know, there was some, some folks that were excited about the CARES Act money that the town were receiving. I know that was.
Don't get excited.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was 1.1 million on the CARES Act. But, you know, the mechanism that they used for that money was a reimbursement mechanism and that doesn't really make sense. I mean, in '08 and '09, it was, it was really used to supplement and backfill what this, what revenue the cities and towns were losing. And this is reimbursement. So essentially, whatever we spent on COVID-19, we have to submit that to the government to get reimbursement. So that's really directed for the town and it's really specific on what schools can, can do. But it makes no sense. A town like our size is not going to generate 1.1 million dollars of reimbursement out of COVID-19.
It is pretty false.
It's just not going to happen. So I know that there are communities and Christine has mentioned it as well, that, that are really advocating for that money to be used to offset the loss, the revenue loss that's happening right now at the state level. So if that happens, then, you know, then we'll be in better shape because we'll have additional funds hopefully that will come to us.
Yeah. So I think that it is important for us to talk about how we can advocate for that on behalf of our town and our kids and our staff. But we can have a discussion about that in a different time on a different agenda.
So what if I just go into a couple of things? I know Michael's working on chair in that screen. For some reason, the spreadsheet's not coming up. But, you know, one of the things that, that we wanted to look at in our cuts, and I want to go through the personnel piece first. If we look at our non-union increases and we have that as a reduction of 95,000, and we've talked about this before, but I think it's important for the impact on that. So that, that, that non-union increase impacts superintendent, director of finance and operations, director of instruction innovation, director of student services, accounting specialist, audit district coordinator, data manager, secretary of finance and operations, administrative assistant to superintendent, director of technology, network administrator, human resources assistant, payroll and human resource manager. And that's something we have shared with the town. Director of facilities also shared with the town. High school principal, middle school principal, Dale Street principal, Wheelock principal, Memorial principal, middle school assistant principal, high school assistant principal, director of food services, athletic director and director of social emotional learning. So that reduction impacts 24 people directly. And that's the $95,000. So essentially freezing all non-union salaries and that $95,000 that's allocated to that would be cut out of the budget. So that's the first, the first tier of looking at reductions. So then we tried to really look at, you know, what are some of the reductions that we can make? Again, we're looking at existing staff and trying to avoid reducing existing staff. So we went through the process and we had some open positions that we have posted and we, some of them we even started interviewing for and actually appointed people, but we let them know that the appointment was really contingent upon the FY21 budget. So we wanted to look at some of the positions that we put up that if we, if we got, if we cut all of those positions, that alone is 22.7 FTEs and that would be 1.4 million. But we wanted to go through and make recommendations to you. And then you can tell us certainly, we have a conversation about it, but tell us certainly if we're in the right direction or if there's something we should look at differently. So we looked at the assistant athletic director at the high school and that was a position that we recommended reducing. Hey, it looks like it's up there. We recommended reducing. And perfect, there it is. The filibuster worked, Jess. Great. So if you could see, as we scroll down on these, on these positions, the ones that we put a red check mark down, those are the ones that Michael and I, and through the leadership team are recommending at this time. The whole host of these positions add up to the 1.4 million. What we've recommended on the cuts doesn't add up to that. It's over, over 600,000. So let's see what we got here. You good, Michael?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So looking at the first one that we looked at was the athletic, assistant athletic director, and that's at the high school and for the middle school. We thought that was going to be a reduction for this year at $43,000.
Michael, can you scroll up a little? Thank you.
So that's something that was, something we'd recommend. Also, looking at a 0.8 math teacher with $66,000 reduction at the high school. Going through to math specialist at Wheelock, that's another open position for 2021, reducing that at 66,000. Wheelock classroom teacher. Again, when I say open, I mean, we're just not replacing the person that's there. That's the recommendation. These are, there are people in these positions now, but they may be open for next year. Teaching assistant positions, it's a couple of positions in there. So that's the 48,000 there. Wheelock classroom teacher. So that's, that's someone that is moving from one position to another within Wheelock. And we feel like we're not going to rehire that classroom position and that will impact class size to make it about 22, 23 at Wheelock. So we thought that was something that is sustainable at this point. The innovation teacher in, at Dale Street. So that's a retirement that we're looking at not refilling at this point. So there's a savings of 85,000 there. We have another retirement for kindergarten teacher. That is a savings of 66,567. So what we've talked about is not, is closing up full-day kindergarten at 160 students, which we're at right now. So closing that off and we have an additional 16 students that have already registered for half-day. But, you know, cutting that one position there and then you'll see kindergarten is in here again too. But we think that managing kindergarten at 22 with a couple of 23s with a full-time aid is something that we can manage at this point. You also see we have a leave of absence, English teacher at the high school. So we're recommending not replacing that at, at this time. An additional kindergarten teacher, which was a new one, which had been cut in that first pass, is 70,000. We have a long-term or substitute at, at the high school. That's 35,000. We're going to look at furloughing that person for one year, leave of absence. We're looking at central office, reducing that one person, 0.3, which is savings of $10,000. And then English teacher at the high school, 0.5, that's an existing position. That will save 29. Business teacher at the high school, 0.2, that saves 12,000. So that is another savings from the high school. And then family consumer science at the high school, $20,000 savings, reduction of 0.3. So all of these, these positions that we have listed fall under the category of an open position, a new position or retirement that we're looking at reducing. So even though we didn't say the, the math teacher at Blake or the physics teacher at the high school, those aren't our recommendations at that point, at this point. But those are positions that fall under the same category. So it is something that if you think we should be looking in a different direction and reducing programs or positions, then that's something that we could look at going forward. But this is just really our recommendation. And then I'll go through the next piece and then certainly any questions, Anna May?
Yeah, I don't know. Should I wait for my questions or?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. Actually, while we're in, I just have a couple, some questions, please. So these open positions and retirements that we're not filling, that's my first set of questions. What does that mean in the classroom? What does that mean for, for other, for other teachers in terms of the, the impact?
Well, it depends on what level. So I'd say the impact at the elementary level would be increased class sizes, you know. So if you look at what that means, you know, you'll see 22 to 23 in classrooms at Wheelock. The kindergarten is really the only place that it's been impacted. So we already said the 22 to 23 there. Dale Street, not replacing, you know, positions there would increase. Grace 4 and 5 are going to be large next year. So we're looking at, Steve and I met today going over that and we're looking at a range of classrooms at Dale Street from 22 to 25 throughout the school. So I think you're going to see an impact definitely because there's a large class going through, two large classes going through at Dale Street. And we had added additional positions for those before in, while they were in Wheelock to bring down those class numbers and those class sizes. But if we don't rehire some of these, then it will bring that up to between 20, 22 and 25. I mean, it's certainly not ideal, right? I mean, having 25 kids in a classroom is not ideal. It's also not unheard of.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's where we got to approach this, that it's, it's, it's not what we're used to in Medfield, but it's certainly not unheard of either.
Okay. So now with the furloughs and the existing teachers, now, now, for example, an English, high school English teacher, 0.5. So are you making an existing full-time teacher part-time? Or is someone part-time?
Right. So that's going to be a situation where classes will be, sections will be lost there. So you'll probably see increased class size in the English department. You know, there's, there's definitely reduction in what can be offered. I think anything you see at the high school is a reduction in what can be offered for, for kids, but also increased class sizes throughout. I mean, I think that, you know, Christine Power made a really good assessment the other day when she. You know, it can't be the way it was right now. So.
Right. So are these individuals, because now, you know, when you think of open positions, when you think of retirements, you think, all right, someone's not getting that notice. Now I'm looking at this section here and those are people, those are real people who would arise, have jobs.
Correct.
And.
Reductions, they're fractional reductions to what they're, they're full-time with fractional reductions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and can you, now with furlough, what does, what does that mean? They could keep their benefits.
Correct.
But.
Correct. So, you know, that particular position is a unique situation. So I think the furlough is, makes the most sense there as opposed to a leave of absence. We could do either, either there. But, you know, furlough isn't used a lot in, in the public sector, but it certainly is used a lot in the private sector. So essentially, it's going to be someone on leave of absence, but still retains benefits in that position and can come back. So can come back whenever it makes sense. So right now, we're saying it's going to be an entire year. But if we get additional money back from the, from the state, you know, it might be a half a year for a low in that position. So, you know, again, a lot of this is, is a lot of what ifs, which I don't like having what ifs in June. That's the most frustrating part is that we're in a position where, you know, typically the budget's set in May and we're done by, by June and we know everything that's happening. So it's really, it's frustrating for us, but it's even more frustrating and, and anxiety provoking for staff because we're still having these conversations about reductions and they just don't know.
Jeff, I have two questions. Anna May, I'm sorry, are you done, Anna May?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
I don't, we don't have to talk about this right now, but I want to, I want to make sure that we put a pin in this particular conversation about what the cluster structure will look like at Blake Middle School if we're reducing by, or not replacing a math teacher and, and how that kind of impacts that, how we organize kids within that, within that school. The other thing I think I'm most concerned about is the math specialist position at Wheelock. If we're looking at larger class sizes and math, math has kind of been a little bit under-supported at Wheelock. And if we are going to be looking at kids who need more help over time, particularly considering that they have not been in school for quite some time. I know that we have a great deal of, of reading support there and that's fantastic. Of course, it's never enough, but I think sometimes math gets the short shift. And I honestly don't know the solution to that, but I do think it's important that, that we talk about it. Because one of the reasons, or one of the things I came into this meeting with today was to really truly try to think about what my, what my biases were about every single one of these positions that I'm trying to come into every meeting at this point reflecting on what my perceptions are versus what might be reality. So, so I think that that's the one that is the most alarming to me because I want to make sure that this is, you know, math specialists are for kids who are not necessarily on IEPs or at that level, but definitely need increased support. So, and I'm, obviously you know that I'm explaining that to other people. So can we talk a little bit about what that decision was like? And where's it coming from and how we feel about that?
Sure. So I mean, I think that all valid points, I would say that we do have an assistant that, or assistant position in that, in that school that would hop out in that. I mean, I think it's, I mean, none of this is easy, right? I mean, none of this is easy and it's, and we felt like the assistant that's been in there and, and, and working in there has done a wonderful job. And if she stays in the district, then she would be able to support kids at a very high level and we felt good about that. It's, yeah.
So this is somebody who would go perhaps somewhere else within the district, but would not be then at Wheelock.
No, I mean, I think she could go to another district and get a job very easily. So it's whether or not she wants to stay with us and, and be an assistant on that role or she wants to do it somewhere else. So yeah, I mean, there's still going to be some support there. It's not like we're taking all the support away from Wheelock in terms of mathematics. But it wouldn't be the math specialist as, as would they have in, in the other buildings right now.
Okay. I mean, I just, I, I think I needed to, to really understand kind of where the decision making was around that and how you know, that's one of the, the truly kind of like support positions, you know, that, that will be lost. That I think we're, we're all going to end up having to struggle with a lot of academic support. And kids that maybe we just didn't understand needed it before this and then they come back in. But I also think that that is going to be the classroom teacher's job in general, you know?
And I also think that it's, you know, there's an opportunity to look at a model where we share mass specialists, you know, among the three schools and that kind of thing. So that it's nice to have one at each building and that's what we should have. But in this particular case, we have to think differently. And, and maybe it's a situation where a math specialist, you know, works at Memorial on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and at Wheelock on a couple of days and we switch. I mean, those are the kinds of things. And again, the whole backdrop of all this, I know we've talked about this, but we don't even know what September is going to look like yet, right? So you know, when some of these decisions that we're making now, and if we're going remote, I would recommend, if I knew right now we're going remote in September, I'd recommend a very different line of cutting. This is, this is with the assumption that we're going to school as we know it. Or a, you know, a hybrid model that we're in school sometimes and outside. So it's, that, that's the assumption we're making in this process. So if I was, you know, if they told us tomorrow that we're going fully remote, then this will look very, very different.
Right. I mean, obviously, yeah. And it's, it is very hard to figure.
That's the other piece that's added to this, right? So you don't know what the budget's going to be. You know what the state money is going to be. Oh, and by the way, what the heck's school going to look like in September?
Yeah.
So I mean, you get a lot of what ifs in this, in this particular exercise.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, I asked the right questions.
Yep.
About that.
No, you're right, Jess. I think.
I just wanted to try to translate for anybody watching and actually for myself. Looking at this list here and correct me if I'm not summarizing this right. But anything that was a retirement or an open position means that that was something we were hoping to fill. But no one is being, no one is getting cut from their job.
I would say that that position is filled right now. Those jobs that are filled right now. So in this school year, they're filled. But either people are, you know, on, or we need additional staff somewhere. We're just not adding it. And so
But the exist.
Positions, not bodies.
Okay. But those that are labeled existing are people that are actually losing point, you know, three or point seven. Or is there any that is completely losing a job?
The, the three that we have there right now are fractional. And I would say that the teaching assistants, those are, those are lost jobs. Yes. But those were fractional jobs that one, one's a point six, one's a point four. So they're both. So that equals the one.
Got it.
Yep. I mean, this is, again, this was the way that we tried to do it, that it's like we build our budget. We go zero based and we start from the beginning, go all the way up. We don't just apply, you know, a 4% increase and say we're done. So it's the same kind of process when you unfortunately have to reverse and take positions out. It's going position by position, looking at schedules, looking at potentially what the enrollment's going to be in different grade levels and making decisions around that. So unfortunately they're value decisions and that's, that's what budget cuts are. They're value decisions. And we have to go through this process and, and go step by step. And again, this is the first time you guys are looking at this stuff. So it needs to digest and we continue the conversation tomorrow. But I think this is from our perspective, what we think is, is best at this point in time.
So for example, as you say, this is the first time we're looking at this. I'm trying to understand. So for example, family computer science, business teacher. So for example. Sorry.
Consumer science.
Sorry. Yes. Does that mean we're, we're canceling a course or we're just making the classes bigger?
So we'd look at a couple of options. One is, is looking at reducing sections of those. So we, we might be able, we might be losing a course or we might be losing a section. And like, for instance, when we have electives, the, if we're scheduling and we're trying to offer electives to kids in this situation. Now I'm just talking about in this situation, not generally.
Yeah.
Generally, we develop electives based on kids' interest and what would be really important for them. But where we're in a position like we are now, we have to look at electives in which we can have the most kids take. All right. And there are, there are electives in, say, family consumer science and only 15 kids can take and it's capped.
There are only so many stove.
Right. So you have to look at, you know, what are some of the electives that number one are good for kids? And number two, because of reducing the amount of electives that we have, that more kids can, are able to take and take advantage of. So again, that goes into some of the decision making as well. Where if you have a, a class where you can have 25 or 30 kids in an elective versus one, you can have 15. Well, it makes more sense at this point to, to keep the 30 so that we have more options for kids to take electives.
I have just a couple of basic questions. One, the overall list, because there's some that are recommended, some are not. Was that really, again, based on your original drivers, which is like minimum, minimum impact on opportunities for students? Minimum impact of existing.
That's, that's everything to him. So the, the ones that we chose with the check mark are the ones we feel the minimum. So, so that, that made, met our criteria. Those are all there for you to see because you may disagree and say, you know what, Jeff, I think we need to look at, you know, art in the elementary or something. I don't know. I mean, those are just, these are just areas that, that we, the whole list of them are areas that are possible reductions. And we put the red check marks next to the one that we think meet the, meet the criteria that we shared earlier.
I have one that I actually don't argue with eliminating the position, but I want to ask about the, the future impact of not filling position, which is the innovation teacher at Dale Street. I completely agree and understand that this is not something we should be doing right now. But my concern is I've been listening to the Dale Street School meetings and kind of thinking about the Dale Street School. And this is a position that if we were to continue to have a robust program around innovation and project based learning and which is really kind of how education is, is going. If we had that program in place, there's a good possibility that we could also get that space within the Dale Street School, the new Dale Street School as part of our reimbursement package.
Correct.
But if we don't have a robust program in place, then we cannot then add it on. So I don't.
Say that MSBA would define robust as having a person running the program.
Right. And that is a.
And that's what in our educational plan is, our educational plan, we have, we have those science and steam rooms in there as part of our educational plan for Dale Street. And part of the deal is you've got to have someone currently there by the time the school was built, that's doing that work.
Okay. So by the time the school is built, as opposed to right now, as we're doing education, the education plan that we would hand to the MSBA. So we do have some time to replace that.
So we would have time to replace that prior to the building of the school. Yes.
That makes me feel much better. Okay.
I just think though, I mean, here's the issue, right? And, and again, this is a workshop. So it's kind of free flowing. The issue here is that we all know that FY22 is worse than this.
Right. That's the other thing.
The state, if the state revenue is down six, six million right now, and that's from March to now. If COVID-19, as we see it today, lasts longer, now you're going to have almost an entire year of a financial cycle with revenue down that low. So it's going to be very, very difficult in FY22. So I mean, this is just, this is just the beginning of this process.
I know. I know. Yeah. I mean, I, obviously when Denise presented, when Representative Garlic presented to the selectmen about town revenue about a month ago at this point. And she was talking about it in 2009. We were about as a town, or I mean, as a state, we were about four billion below projections. Is that kind of how? And now we're at least double that.
Yeah, I think we're in the sixth ballpark right now.
Yeah. So, you know, in the height of the, the recession that up to now has been probably the worst that, that I've seen and I'd hope never to see again. We're doubling down on that right now. Now, hopefully, it will be short lived, but we can't, we can't know that.
I would just also, if anyone that's watching that hasn't seen our public hearing presentation. I mean, it's pretty in depth in terms of the, the detail and why we're doing what we're doing in the original budget. So I would encourage people to look at that if you're interested in, you know, where the budget has been as opposed to where it is right now. And then it gives you a really good picture of, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it. And then also gives you some background information. So when we're talking about things like FTE and Circuit Breaker and Chapter 70 and all that stuff, that, that you understand what, what we mean. So that might be something that's on our website. Click on school committee. It'll say budget information. Click on that and there'll be a folder for FY21. It's all right there. You can click right on that.
One. Never mind. I, I lost it. Although I, yeah. Oh, I know. The, um, the programming that we were looking at in which we kind of saw it as a, a simple, not so simple, but a cost shift from sending kids who need kind of life skills and additional programming after the age of 18 and bringing that back into the district. That is still in place because it's, is that correct?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So that that's a simple, while that is a new program, it's really kind of essentially a budget shift from paying out of state or out of school tuition to bringing that back into, into our district. Okay. I wanted to make sure that that was.
So if we go to, so this is only options, you know, looking at staffing. So we had the, the non-union staff and this is the, the union staff here. If Michael, we go to the reduction options.
Right.
So these are additional options that, that you have as a school committee to take a look at. Again, we, we got to the 1.2 without doing any of this. But I think it's something that you need to consider and kind of direct us where you want us to go. I, I do want to say that numbers two through six are, are deal with contract negotiations. So I will read that, but we really can't talk about that. That needs to be a, a conversation executive session tomorrow night. But I'll read down through the list and we really, again, we can't really talk about two through six. So number one of the additional reduction option was the $200,000 taken out of capital and, and prepay some computer equipment with FY20 money based on some of the savings that we have. I mean, I think that's kind of a no brainer that we should, that's one of our recommendations that, that we do that. One of the things that we could do is a, a one day reduction. Again, this is one of the contract pieces. So I'm just going to read it and then go to the next one. A one day reduction in the teacher's contract. Their current contract is 183 days. If we reduce that to 182, that would be a savings of 127,000. We, we negotiated in the last contract to look at stipends and we've been doing that now for a few years. An increase in teacher stipends. We have one more year left on that. And then deferring that stipend increase to a different fiscal year, whether it be 22 or 23, would save $100,000. As you know, in our teacher contract, there are really three buckets of professional development that we do as a school district. We have our R and D, which we have teachers do great work over the summer. We have conference and travel where teachers go out to different conferences. And then we have course reimbursement in the contract. Course reimbursement is 42.5 in the contract. So that's, teachers want to take a graduate course. They get it approved by the principal. And by me, they take the course, they submit it and they get up to $750 in reimbursement. But that's capped at 42.5. So if that was taken out, that would be a savings of 42.5. As you know, the mechanism that teachers are paid on their pay scale, schedule is through steps and lanes. So every year you get a step and it caps out depending on what, what column you're in. And then lanes is the horizontal movement based on degree attainment. So as teachers get additional degrees, they move horizontally across the pay scale. And so that's a lane. So if we froze steps and lanes for FY21, that's a savings of 479,000. Our teachers also have negotiated a contract with a 2% cost of living for next year. If that is frozen, that's 461,000. Again, we've accomplished what we think the 1.2 without that, but I'm just sharing these as additional options for you. The reduction in force for open positions in the existing retirement, new positions, that's the stuff we just went over. Non-payroll cuts at 10%. So that's the list that we had given you prior. We went over at a couple of school committee meetings of looking at reducing all the non-payroll lines 10%. That gives us the savings of 275. Non-union increases, which we went over the 95,000. Non-payroll cuts. So that's an additional, in addition to the 10% going through again and doing additional 50,000. You know, just again, not recommending it, but putting it out there, Elementary World Language Program, that entire program would be 251. And then looking at furloughing our aides from full time to part time. So essentially making, and again, we'd have to do this individually because some, some of our folks are attached to students. So we couldn't just unilaterally do this. But looking at reducing folks from full time to part time. If we did that across the board, that would be 666,000 as a savings. Again, not, we couldn't do that as a whole, but we want to just kind of give that as an option where we could look. And, and, but again, if we're going to look at, you know, increased class sizes and we're going to look at some other things. It's, you know, the assistants play a really important part in reducing that student to teacher ratio and that adult to, to student ratio. So these are just reduction options, the 13 that we came up with, which all equal 4.6 million. So you can pick and choose as you, as you see fit. Michael, the next one, the recommendation. So our recommendation based on what, you know, we've been working on was to do number one, the prepaid computer capital, the 200,000. To do number seven, the reduction in force with the open positions. And then number eight, the existing retirement and new positions. The additional non-payroll cuts of 10%, excuse me, the 10% non-payroll cuts and then the non-union increases, which gets us to a 1.2 million number. So that's again, what we're recommending. But certainly it's up for discussion in your purview of where you'd like us to go.
Jeff, what would, I mean, kind of high level, what, what were the drivers between those ones versus others?
I would say it would be the, the, the three items that we talked about in the beginning. You know, looking at, you know, what, what doesn't impact kids in their programming options the, the most? What doesn't impact existing staff the most? And what can we, can we, how can we minimize? And what can we, can we, how can we minimize the, uh. Unemployment for the town side. I mean, that's how we got to those. That's what we applied, again, with numbers one and two. Number one being the most important, uh, the second one was number two in the third round, looking at number three to try to see if that fits into. What our proposal is.
And you said, again, the union-related were numbers, what, the ones that we can't talk about?
Uh, two to six.
Two to six, okay.
All right, the dog is happy in and out. Dogs love Zoom, that's for sure.
Well, this is a lot to digest, and a lot of these are very painful. And to- tomorrow night, we vote on, on the budget.
If I could just add in a may, I would say that, having been through this before i- in this role. Um, one of the biggest dangers of even doing how we, doing the reductions the way we did as far as. Reduction in force, open positions, one of the biggest dangers is trying to get those positions back.
Oh, sure.
You know, I mean, that's, that's the issue, especially when we're looking at FY twenty-two and what that could potentially look like. When we reduce these, these positions, uh, it will take us several fiscal years to get, get these back, several. It's not going to be something that we, we pop in next year or the year after, and, and we're back to what we were this year. It, it's going to take several, several years for us to get. These positions back.
And also, you know, these very qualified valued individuals might very well go to another district, you know?
Yes, so I mean, I, these open positions that, you know, I, I've met with these people through Zoom as part of the process, the last part is they meet with me before they're hired. I mean, the, the people that are principals and our teachers, as they do their, um. Their hiring groups, the people they've chosen so far, there's, there's, they'll get a job somewhere very quickly. They're just outstanding. You know, I was actually really excited about, um, all of them to come and join our staff, but I think it's. I, I think this is the best way to go at this point.
So, uh, you know, one question I have is, when I think of the drivers, right? Like, I mean, you can go in, impact of opportunities for students, that's broad, right? Like, we could go into what does it mean? But one part I think of is ability to flex for where, you know, the new world of next year. And, you know, I, I, I actually would, I hear loud and clear is, yes, eliminating those positions, it's a lot harder to get them back. Right, so I know there's, there's some areas we can and can't talk about, but I, I do wonder, like, do we think about that as a driver? Um, you know, this is thinking of, of. How we're going to, um, manage the challenges of next year. I, I think that, you know, that's something that co- that comes to mind for me.
I- in terms of what the structure's going to look like, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I, and I, maybe, this is maybe me being new guy, but we vote on the overall budget. You can still, like, at what point, if, if, do we make some of these decisions, like, um, if we are going to cut staff? At what point does that happen? Like, I think I know, but I want to.
Tomorrow? I mean, I mean, I think you gotta, you gotta, you gotta vote a bottom-line number tomorrow, but I mean, I. You, you're really going to talk to us about whether you think our, our recommendations or where you think we should go, or looking at that list. I mean, you might tell us tomorrow that you want us to go in a totally different direction, and that's fine, we'll do that. Uh, but you still, you still vote that bottom-line budget. And, you know, we work through those numbers and maybe have another meeting early next week or something, but, uh, we, we have to notify staff. On non-renewals, uh, by the fifteenth of June, you know, that's something. And I think the other component of this that we really haven't talked about yet. Is we also have to decide if and when we get money, who comes back first, right? Like, what's the process of that? So it's kind of like the, looking at the tier cuts now, but the reverse of it is. Okay, let's say the state comes through Level Funds Chapter Seventy, we get additional six hundred thousand into our budget. Then how do we get people back, and what positions come back, and what's the priority for that? So that's a, another.
Very hard to bring a teacher in in the middle of the year.
Who's available, quality.
Right. Jeff, number, um, item number eight. Uh, is that, those are positions of people who are retiring, or that were new ads. Uh, it just seems like it's a very large number. Um.
That's what we worked through.
Yeah, so that's part of the ones we went through.
Oh, okay, alright.
So it's also a part of that, that whole, that whole spreadsheet, it really has all of them on there. It has the open positions on the top.
Yep.
And the existing, um, you know, we have a couple leave of absence that we're just choosing not to replace, and that, you know, that's. But, you know, they're coming back next year, so we have to find a position for them next year. This, it's really a short-term, uh, solution.
Yep.
A larger issue.
So, bottom line, the direct impact on all of our students through this is. Quite obviously, larger class sizes, right?
Yeah, I would say that. I would say less opportunities, less selection.
I, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the high school, and you know, um, most pop, one of the most popular classes to get into is, you know, the cooking. Um, the consumer science, or the business, you know, I, I know there's a club that started because of the business, and. That's very popular, so I. Huge, and kids are talking about it, and it's an awesome opportunity, and so, yeah, bigger class sizes, but. Less opportunities.
Sizes at the high school, though. They're, you know, high schoolers are big kids, and they know a little bit more of the social contract and how to. Contain themselves, um, you know, I still don't want huge classes in high schools, but I'm, I'm more worried. About, you know, Dale specifically, or Wheelock, producing the force there. And creating larger class sizes for the younger kids.
In perpetuity, essentially, for the next several years, so that it's not going to get better when they hit second or third.
That, that's not sitting well with, with me.
No, and back to Justin's point, uh, of that, um, the math specialist, you know, those are the foundation years, and those. You know, if kids don't, you know, I, I truly believe that those early elementary, you got to give them that solid base. For them to, to move, to move on, so.
It's a tough one. I mean, I know that one of the things Jeff, you and I had kind of talked about is that. Are the kids who are entering kindergarten, assuming, assuming that the world is, you know, like, like school used to be.
Yeah.
At least, you know, for a large proportion of our school year, the kids who are entering kindergarten. Do not have within their memory, being in a group learning situation. You know, these are kids who have lost their, their pre-K experience. And the same thing, essentially, with our first graders, or entering first graders, that, that many of these kids. And particularly the kids who are in the half-day program, have also lost that long-term. Socialization of being able to negotiate and work within a kind of a larger group and all of those things, and so they are. Very vulnerable at this point, as, and, as are the rest of our kids. I mean, I think it's, it's interesting, living with a couple of middle schoolers. And having, uh, friends who have older kids and younger kids, how all of our kids are experiencing this. Uh, in different ways, but they are all intensely experiencing the, the mourning, the loss, the loss of developmental. Milestones that you're supposed to make within social, you know, uh, within a social milieu and within a school milieu, and. Yeah, I mean, I think that. That particularly at Memorial and, and Wheelock, I, I worry. We all worry. And I don't, in any way, by mentioning this, I want to make sure that, that Jeff knows that I am in no way questioning. The necessity of it. I just think that if, if we're going to feel like we vote for it. Then we really have to let it marinate overnight about what that's going to look like, and be strategic about how we get it back if we need to. Right, and we'll have other discussions tomorrow in, uh. In our open meeting, and we'll be able to take feedback from people, and I know that. Each person within each school is going to look at these cuts and say, no, but, but the high school needs it, or the middle school needs it, or. The, you know, Memorial School needs it, and we're all going to, people are going to kind of go to, to what they know. But it's our jobs to think about how it is long-range, and it's always been Jeff's job, and, and, and I trust him very much with that. I, I've never seen him not project that out, but for us to feel good about it. Um, I think we have to put it, well, we will feel good, but we have to put a lot of thought into it, because I, that does frighten me. That, uh, it would take a long time to get that kindergarten teacher back, and. It could take a long time to get that Dale Street person back, you know?
Yeah, I would say, like, if, if you remember the conversations we had a few years ago when, when class size was, was an issue in the budget year, I forget. It was maybe three years ago, I'm not sure the exact year.
Yeah.
Um, at that point, at the public hearing, I believe I recommended a reduction of, of staffing at the middle school, because. There was, it was two years of small groups going through there, um, and we ended up, you know, you guys ended up voting to put them back in. Um, so they had those really small classrooms in, at the middle school for the last couple of years. Well, they're starting to get into the high school. So, and that's why we felt a little more comfortable with some of these reductions, with a smaller group going into the high school than we've had in the years past. And, and the other piece is that, you know, we're, our projections have, uh, kindergarten for next year at two twenty-three. We're at one seventy-six right now.
Right.
So.
Um, but to some extent, I still, I feel. Better about that, knowing those numbers, but at the same time, it doesn't mean that those. Uh, class sizes are. Uh, any smaller. Oh, well, no, I mean, you know, our, our target for kindergarten is twenty-two, but what happens? And again, this is not being able to project into the future. None of us are fortune tellers, but if we think about it. And. Even if we dip this year or next year in terms of population. We will go back up again. Economies do recover, and I, I have great faith. That people will continue to think that Menfield is a, a really wonderful place to be, and a great place to want to raise their children, although.
Houses, houses are still selling here, this summer. They're just not moving in as quickly. They'll be moving in this summer.
But I think, you know, I mean, I, I know that we've been working very hard with, you know, real estate agents and. And everyone else in the community to really make people aware that as soon as they know that they're coming. So I feel okay about that number right now. Obviously, we've, we've gotten caught off-guard before. Um, but not in these circumstances. But I do think that in a couple of years, we're going to, we're going to have a problem, and we need to be. Look, we need to be constructing a, a long-term plan around how it is we would put those back in if we need to, in the future, right?
So in terms of.
Here for a while.
In terms of the kindergarten, Jess, I think, you know, looking at the, the, the nice part about that, and, and the way that gives us flexibility. Is because Full Day Kindergarten is a tuition-based program, we can pay for half that salary through tuition. So, that, that gives us a little more flexibility to add those positions back if they, if they need to, like, for instance, if we, if we have, um. You know, fifteen or twenty kids move in over the summer in kindergarten, with this budget right here, we'd probably be able to, um. At least figure out a way to, to get another kindergarten teacher in here if we really needed to, you know, because you have that flexibility, whereas. You don't have that at, at Blake, you don't have that at Dale Street or, or Wheelock, because we're not, they're not tuition-based programs, so.
And, and I have to say, I think probably Dale Street is the one that concerns me the, the most now.
Yeah, especially with those large classes going in there. I'm, I'm worried about, uh, the exercise classes. Uh, the, the larger classes, uh, the fatigue on both the students and the teachers with the larger class loads. Uh, particularly at the high school, if we're talking twenty, over twenty-six in a classroom times five classes. Uh, that's a lot of kids, uh, you know, for each teacher. Um, and, and the middle school as well, if they're going to be, you know, uh, those larger classes, so, um.
High school populations tend to be more, um.
Little bit forgiving on that.
Because of the, the scheduling intent, you know, you can have quite a large class and then have one that's somewhat smaller, but, you know, my kid will be there next year, so.
Um, I'm not sure if there's language in the contract about, about caseload for teachers, um, I wasn't sure if there was, but. Um, so, but yeah, I echo, uh, what Jess was referring to about, you know. All of our students are going to have some sort of extra fatigue, um, and not knowing what the fall is going to look like is. Adding some extra pain to this as well, because we may need some extra professional development of some kind of the summer to prep for whatever it is we're going to be doing in September. So on top of that, um, so I, um. Yeah, so I, I'm, I'd like to, you know, I'm, I know this is not the end of the conversation. Obviously, we need to go into tomorrow and continue more conversation as well. Um, but looking at it, uh, at all these options, and being able to, um. Pick maybe parts of, parts of some of them, and put them, you know, together to come up with a plan, and I know you and Mike will do that. Um, and, you know, and advise what's possible in, you know, what's possible and what's the best fit, so. Uh, but, you know, keeping those items in mind that, you know, that Justin and others, uh, were talking about is definitely important. Um, I do worry about those sizes, because obviously that was kind of my thing, uh, around class size. And, um, and so it is very concerning. Um, but, you know, it's, and it's concerning for the, you know, for the teachers, um. You know, three more, three more of my sons in machines class this year, and, uh, that may have been, that may have been it, so.
We, um, we all feel like that sometimes.
Jeff, um, question about summer PD around preparation for re-entry, et cetera. Is there a possibility with that COVID, you know, the CARES Act, that, that could be considered. Um, money towards, um, or reimbursement towards that PD work?
That's a great question. So Christine and I did talk about that yesterday. Christine Treewiler and I talked about that yesterday, so we're going to look into that. Uh, because you notice that there's no reduction here listed for R and D, because we feel that's pretty important, uh, going into the summer. And, and what we have to do and, and plan for, and, you know, we, we're targeted to get that guidance by the, from the state on June fifteenth. And, um, you know, he told us yesterday that, uh, it's, it's not just eighty-five, but. Expect ninety percent of what happens, or what you need to do in the fall to be directed from us in DPH. So it really doesn't give a lot of flexibility to school districts, and, um. You know, we're going to be told pretty much what we need to do, and, and what that looks like. So, again, a lot depends on. Even though we're getting the guidance in June, that we're told to be prepared for changes in August if things go, you know, uh. Up or down in terms of the pandemic, so.
So have teachers already submitted, um, their R and D requests? No, okay.
We're actually, um, we're actually going to decide what they are this year, uh, based on what the guidance is.
Right, okay.
So we're, we're going to try to enlist teachers based on what the guidance is, and, and have them, um. You know, key people like department chairs and so on, and other teachers to, to get involved in that, in that process, but it's not going to be. You know, typically, we have the R and D that it needs to align with our strategic plan, and needs to be an issue that we're working on as a district, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this time, we have to really direct that, because we're not sure exactly, uh, what it's going to look like in September, and we need to make sure we have plans around.
Or January, or March.
January, right.
You know, so that we really need to be thinking about continuity of learning, which you know, again, I'm just stating it for the people who are watching. We need to be watching for the. We need to be making sure that we're thinking about continuity, and not having to go back to. Not having this be the thought around just re-entry, that, that this is really a continuity issue, and how do we continue that learning? That we've got going, if we need to leave for a week, if we need to, you know, back off for a period of time. One of the other things I, I wonder about is that I know that in terms of, um, the way that businesses have been phased in, in terms of their. Um, workforce is, uh, you know, like, for instance, my husband's business, my husband's office. They're really only allowed to have twenty-five percent of their usual, um, uh, group there. And one of the things, and I, I kind of quickly want to put out there is that I don't know, I mean, if, if there is a point in which. The state kind of says you can only have this many kids in a classroom. How, again, is that money that we could conceivably use, uh, as COVID reimbursement to be able to. To decrease the class sizes. Obviously, we can't use that now, that's not what that money is used for. But how are we, how do we think flexibly about that, and about those possibilities?
Yeah, it's a pretty narrow definition right now, is, is what they've given us, so we're, we're hoping that it gets broader, so we'll be able to do some of that.
Yeah.
So, in, in a, Jess, this is kind of along the same lines. I know we can't predict the future, but. Either there's, I don't know, federal stimulus money. either there's a federal stimulus money that we find or or, you know, that's classes half full or DC comes back with some recommendations and infrastructure is, you know, going to cost us more money in order to be safe. Do we then, you know, Jeff, is that when you you take this that we have and you start pivoting as best you can with the the bodies and people that you have?
Yeah, I think we do. We do that anyway, right? We'd have to do that if if additional. I mean, I'm not worried about the stimulus at this point. I'm worried about additional cuts that all of a sudden the 10% that we're planning for, which again, I think is the right way to do it, turns into 25%, right? And then we're looking at additional 15% revenue loss in the town, in the schools. And that will require us to do additional cuts. So I think, you know, that's my my big concern right now. And it's just you know, you're doing it in the dark, right? You can't figure it out. You just can't because you don't know what's happening. You don't know whether or not you know, you're going to have level funded chapter 70, or you're going to have additional cuts of chapter 70. You don't know if you're going to be in school live or not. So it's it's difficult. And listen, we're not the only district. Everyone's going through this right now. Everyone, everyone is going through the same thing. They're trying to figure it out as best they can without the crystal ball. And it's it's just not, it's not great. So.
OS is on our list on our list serve for school committee, which people are just gutted, particularly, again, I have to say in underserved communities in in Western Mass, you know, that there is a real divide in our in our state and we don't you know, it's a little bit like it's it's two very different states. And a lot of these communities, I understand why Desi would think very much about mandating most of the interventions because it would be easy not to do them. There are a lot of school districts that simply cannot afford anything and there are communities, and I think we need to know this, that that COVID has literally touched every single child in that community in the last three months. Perhaps even more than deaths through opiates, you know, or and or other issues around poverty and lack of reset resources or consistent resources. And and they need to they're trying to think about equity at the same time. And it's necessary that we think about that, too. I understand that that it's important to mandate some of the stuff so that they can make sure that every child gets served. Anyway, that was my second filibuster for the night.
So I mean, I think at this point, again, a lot, a lot to digest. I encourage you to take a look at the all the positions that we have there, not just the ones re recommended and see if you have additional guidance for us tomorrow and see where you want us to go. The reduction options are there as well. I mean, they're certainly we've we've chosen some of them as our as our recommendation, but that doesn't mean you can't choose another one. So I think that's what we're trying to put all options up here for you. So give us some direction tomorrow. And 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 please know that you can still give us direction tomorrow and still vote the budget line item that needs to be voted for the town. So you can still vote that that number. And we can still be doing this work, you know, going forward and figuring out if you feel comfortable with us doing that. So. Well, that's a that would be my hope. I mean, I think we have to we have to have some sort of versatility here, you know, be able to be agile in this process. Because as soon as you get guided, you know, two weeks from now or two weeks or less, we're going to have guidance. We're going to have to make adjustments again. So I think that's just going to be the name of the game. So.
I just just say it now, and I can ask it tomorrow, but that's where my head goes is I'm trying to use the word level fund or level service, trying to educate next year will be harder and it will cost more, no matter what, whether it's hybrid or what. And I I almost the the big picture is those reduction options. And, you know, you're having $690,000 of it is cutting staff. I I wonder, like, did you guys have a second way of trying to get there that has less of that? Because I mean, people do give us you know, ability to flex, which is going to be essential. That's just my initial read on it.
Yeah, Tim, I would say that when you're looking at 80% of your budget being people, we made those reductions and non payroll cuts twice. We still have to pay our bills. So I think that that's why we're looking at it's impossible to to cut $1 million out of your budget without people. It's impossible.
No, I understand. And and there might be, I don't know whether it's it's a topic in an exec session, you know, they said you you said there's there's certain topics we can't talk about. I don't mean to want to be cautious, but you know, those are those are things that there is different ways to do that.
Jeff, I may have already asked this, but I've forgotten the computer equipment. Are we make have we made other arrangements to get that ahead of time? Is that why that?
Yes.
Okay. Under the circumstances, we're probably going to need it, is what I mean. I would say that, you know, with some savings from employee 20, you know, contract bus contract savings, those kinds of things, we're able to do that. Okay. I just wanted to confirm that we were able to do that because obviously it's going be needed.
Save their receipts for their ink printers and get them to us so that we can reimburse through COVID. That was a joke, by the way, but I do think that we will be
My goodness, I just visions of receipts everywhere.
Michael can handle that. Don't worry about it. Man's a genius. But no, it is a joke, but I, you know, there's we are going to be looking for reimbursable expenses and because that is at this time, again, we can't, we have no crystal ball. And I have not seen this administration particularly interested in revenue replacement. So anything we get needs to be kind of backed up literally like your CVS receipts for your FSA. I mean, it's it is just labor intensive and seen from a very negative point, I think, that everything is about whether you actually deserve this or not, when there are just a lot of people hurting. And that's not necessarily a political statement. I just think that there's a real fault in how this first wave of money was distributed. It was not the emergency rescue that we needed to keep things from getting worse.
I was I was also wondering, could the technology equipment be counted as a as a COVID need for reimbursement, right? To enable that, like, like the Zoom licensing, for instance, itself. Anything like that is directly impacted. I mean, I think the Zoom licenses would definitely qualify, but we we did not purchase any technology or any devices to support kids for COVID. So we had them already in in place. We had them for that were all designated as our MCAS machines. So that was one that we handed out. So we couldn't, we wouldn't, we didn't buy any to be reimbursable.
There was there was a different unfunded mandate. It's hard to keep, yeah, it's hard to keep track sometimes.
What do you think at this point? I think that kind of the takeaways and the things we got, we need to think about is really, you know, where where do you want us to go in terms of reductions? Deviate from what our recommendations are or not, whatever you wanted to want us to do. And then begin the process of start thinking about if we do get additional funds, how do we, where does it go first? And how do we start bringing people back? So.
Right, absolutely.
That's the the two, the big, the big items that we need to start thinking about.
Yeah. And I think, you know, your guiding principles, the way you and Michael, you know, attacked this most unfortunate exercise, you know, with the least amount of to minimize, you know, the impact for opportunities for students and impact existing staffing and then impact unemployment. That was a thoughtful process. And as as painful as this is and this is, it's a lot to think about and we'll digest this, knowing those guiding principles, but and 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 we'll go into it tomorrow.
We have, everyone knows, we have executive session at 5 o'clock tomorrow.
Oh, do we? I think on the agenda, it said it was at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It is. Yep, I'm sorry.
Actually, I wanted to clarify that for people.
Yeah, it did say 5:30 in the email.
Send that tomorrow because this program for that 5 and 5:30.
Exactly. So 5 o'clock tomorrow, folks, bring your questions, comments. And and thank you very much for tuning in.
Can I just say one thing before you go? This was probably the probably worst year for me to be appointed to the Budget Subcommittee. Thank you, Chairperson.
Sorry.
You know, municipal finance is it's complicated. It was a long process that a lot of different people played a role in. A pandemic landed in the middle of an already kind of structurally problematic a budget. And now we're awaiting things that we don't know are going to happen or not. Like, I want to reiterate what Jeff said. It's like planning a budget in the dark completely. But it's worth noting out that the town side is is losing. They're making cuts as well. It's not just the schools. This is a townwide thing that's happening. And that I I know there's a lot of teachers listening in right now. And if there's one thing that they can take away from this discussion and our discussions hopefully tomorrow is that you did nothing wrong and Medfield values you and I hate that it is going to come down to people. And I've I've been in your shoes and it's it's demoralizing and it can feel demeaning. And I don't want any of you to lose faith that Medfield doesn't value you because we do. And we're trying to find a way through this and hopefully we will.
Very well said, Megan. Thank you very much. And yeah, it's been difficult. It's been difficult for Warrant Committee, for the Board of Selectmen, for us, this has been painful. But we will reconvene tomorrow. I think we have to.
Can we give people your email address again, or the the school committee chair?
Yeah.
For the receipts? Is that where the receipts are going?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, they're going right to you, Leo.
To Anna Mae, yeah. SC.
Air at email dot medfield dot net.
Really, any one of us.
Yeah, sure. So just to remind you, Megan Glenn and Jess Riley are on the Budget Subcommittee. And so thank you to thank you again, Jeff and Michael and the Warrant and the Board of Selectmen. It's been
And thank you so much to all of you for
Yeah. Yeah, the teachers out there, I want to thank you all for the work you've been doing. I there's such a large collection of them here, so we don't get a chance to to voice that. So this is absolutely unprecedented time in education and
And that.
What's that?
Unprecedented.
Oh, sorry. My bad. You know, I don't think anyone, even in the 80s, when budgets were terrible for schools, you know, and then to, you know, the last stressors, this is definitely something that has been we've never we've never had to face before. So I I thank you all for rolling with it and Dr. Marsden and your team for continuing to lead the way and guide everybody. So is we will, there will be an end to this. I know I like to be the optimist. But it's it's not going to come as quickly as we hope, I guess. So.
Alrighty.
Alright, thank you ever so much. And I really hope that I hear and that we hear from many of you. Jeff, when could this meeting be up on our website? Could we just relatively quickly or because I think people might want to
Yeah, I'll check with Owen, I'm sure.
Okay, because I mean, obviously, since we have, you know, this turnaround time between now and tomorrow's meeting.
Right.
We certainly hope to vote on a budget. We'd like to give that town that the town the feeling of that stability. You know, it would be nice to be able to have people be able to review it. So.
I'll check with Owen.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By Leo, seconded by Jess. I'll do a roll call. Jess Riley.
Hi.
Leo Brem.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Tim Knight.
Hi.
Anna Mae O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
Alrighty, thank you. See you tomorrow.